All right, it is 7:04. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Heather, would you lead us, please? All members of the Board of Selectmen are here and present to ask now for a motion to approve the November 18th Board of Selectmen's special meeting.
Show move.
A second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? November 20th Board of Selectmen regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the November 20th Board of Selectmen regular meeting.
There a second? Mr. Leach? Any discussion or corrections? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna ask that we do public participation and then take our guests out of order, and I'll introduce them after we do public participation, if that's okay. Public participation is on the agenda twice. This is the first of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board. If you would like to do so, please state your name and your address, and then state your business. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then provide the same opportunity to anybody with us online. Is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the Board of Select? Was that the wind?
Yes.
Wow. Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, Navy 9th May Street. Terrible buzz from these speakers over our head.
Not sure if it's the speakers or the lights, but we can look at it.
I don't know if the volume is too high on that part of the system.
Nobody's supposed to be able to address that. We'll have to look at that for next time. Thank you for that. Is there other public comment? Later, okay. Is there other, other public comments? Is there other public comments? Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address, and then state your business. Okay. I'd now like to ask for a motion to take up Agenda Item 9B, the Westfield State Graduate Presentation.
Motion to take Item 9B out of order.
A second.
Motion, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. As has been the case for many years now, the Town of East Windsor has worked collaboratively with Professor Di Stefano from Westfield State University with his Organizational Behavior Graduate Course in the School of Public Administration. I know Professor Di Stefano from having been a student of Professor, Professor Di Stefano's now, almost 10 years ago. Wow. But it's been a good collaborative relationship, I think, between the town and the university where we've used organizational behavior students to look at various aspects of town government. Past projects have included customer service enhancements, economic development strategies, community services, service delivery, and this year we have students who have looked into our emergency preparedness and our, our local emergency operation planning. So, Dr. Di Stefano, I'm going to turn the floor over to you if you want to introduce your students, and, and then I'm going to turn the floor over to them and hear what they have to say.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Charles Di Stefano. I don't want to steal their thunder. Just about working really hard this semester, working in a great partnership with the city. And what they're presenting now is preliminary results. So, we're still working on the final project. This is a time to share where they are right now, to get feedback, which is really important to help us with that final paper, final project that will be submitted. With that, I would like to introduce you all and ask you to come forward and others will be found.
We have a flash drive for a presentation. This was her presentation, Obi?
Yep. Alrighty, I'm starting us off tonight. So, hello, we're all from Westfield State University. You heard from Di Stefano from the Masters of Public Administration Program. And today we're presenting you with, if you want to click.
Or draw more role than necessary. Go.
So, we're talking about recommendations for emergency preparedness and the LEOP, which stands for Local Emergency Operations Plan. So, we looked into the LEOP here at East Windsor. We're going to share what we found and our recommendations and all that fun stuff with you guys tonight. So. Next, please. All right, so first, you have to know who we are. So, I think if you click each time, someone's name pops up. Brayden!
My name is Brayden. Brayden interned with us last summer, actually.
I'm Laura Waskevitz.
I'm Cecilia Winierski.
I'm Nathaniel Perez. I'm attending remotely.
Yes, he's on the screen.
Peter Swanson.
I'm Victor.
There he is. So, obviously, we had some aims with the project, a lot of evaluating, investigating, identifying, all of those words. So, some of our big points was first figure out what an LEOP is. So, what is a local emergency operations plan? We're also evaluating protocol that's on that LEOP, investigating how personal protective equipment is stored and used, something that happens in emergency personnel, identifying how the emergency distribution points are chosen, how the public, how you guys are made aware of these, investigating how the town evaluates personnel's ability to respond to natural disasters such as hurricanes, blizzards, which we had kind of a blizzard the other day, and then creating recommendations for all of the above. Open background install. We worked with First Selectman Jason Bowza and the Chief of Police Matthew Carl, who could be here tonight. We learned about East Windsor's current LEOP, including the strengths and the challenges that came with that. And, like I said, we identified recommendations to help improve that LEOP. And I'm moving it forward to simple, okay.
So, in order to collect data, we had two methods. And one of the methods was online survey, and the second method was interviews with some key personnel from different departments such as police, fire, and public works. So, with the, with the next, so with the online sample survey, it was done through Google Survey. So, we had 19 people from CERT, which is Community Emergency Response Team. And those are volunteers that, I think, helped to volunteer, help with others in the community. And so, through that, we had nine responses through the survey out of the 19. And like, you can see that, oh, this was, we attended one of the events on the 22nd, so I threw some pictures in there. But some of the sample questions, we had some open-ended questions. We had some, like where you checked them off, there were some multiple choice. And through that, we got some of the, some of the answers and the takeaways from that.
I'll give that.
If you don't mind going to the next slide. So, as, as she had mentioned, 19, 13 members, we got nine total responses, which in terms of surveys is actually not a terrible turnout, as, as you might know. And we did find a few trends with that, so if you go to the next slide. It's a little hard to see.
I may get so.
So, the, the first question, this question there says, "How familiar are you with the town's Local Emergency Operations Plan?" As you can see, there is 44% saying they are somewhat familiar. However, if you combine the other three that are there, it obviously outweighs the 44%, and those three are unfamiliar, not familiar at all, and not sure. You'll see throughout this, there's a lot of answers that are just not sure. The second one there on the bottom right says, "Do you know your specific role responsibilities?" 55% there saying no, and the other 44 saying somewhat. Go to the next slide. Whoa.
Oh.
Only I had known.
Really soon.
That was Zooms, too. It's crazy.
I don't know what's going on with that. Okay, so moving on to how familiar you are with the town's Emergency Planning and Preparedness Initiative. As you can see, a very mixed bag of results here. However, again, the majority being not familiar at all, unfamiliar, or not sure. Should you go to the next one? The next one here says, "How often have you had difficulties reaching out to other agencies, departments, or key contacts during drills?" As you can see here, often is the number one response there. So, these are agencies within the town that the respondents here are saying that they have a, a difficult time communicating with during drills, that not during actual events, just during the drills. The next slide. So, this one, "Are building evacuation routes clearly marked and unobstructed?" As you can see, there's 66% of the respondents saying not sure. There were three questions on the survey that were similarly formed to this one regarding marked and, so like PPE storage. Is there clearly marked thing saying that this is PPE storage? There was another one asking about building evacuation routes for vulnerable communities, so like an elderly care facility. And all of the results for those questions were exactly the same as this one with just about 70% saying not sure, and the other 33% saying yes. If we go to the next slide. So, the, the takeaway is there's communication concerns, as we saw. But the general thing that, that I definitely found with this is that there's a lack of knowledge surrounding the LEOP. As you can see, with a lot of the, the not sure responses, there's just a lot of folks who answered this that don't really understand what they're looking at with the LEOP, and that was a very clear through some of the open-ended responses where they just said, "I really don't know anything." Or another trend was they just maybe rolling on for a year or two, so they don't really have a lot of knowledge because they haven't been there long enough. The last part there is a desire for a common storage space. There was one response that was actually really, really in-depth about during an emergency, only one person has keys to a storage facility for PPE equipment. And if that person isn't available, then folks can't get to the PPE equipment. And there was a couple of answers that had desire for a storage space that might be shared by everyone in town. Go to the first slide, I think we are on to interviews.
All right, so myself and Nate up there on the screen, we were conducted several interviews with a number of town officials. And the main objectives of these interviews was to assess the preparedness level and to determine how ready and how capable everybody is. So, we started with speaking with several individuals, including First Selectman Bowza and Police Chief Matthew Carl, as well as Deputy Chief Murphy and Police Sergeant Knowles and two other town officials. We conducted several interviews over a couple days and got a lot of wonderful information from everybody. But our main aim, and if you could go to the next slide, please, our main aim, we had two main aims, and our first main aim was to assess the communication among members of the emergency management team. And we pretty much came to the conclusion that, as the surveys showed, there is some trouble with communication, but that's actually one of the strengths. So, it was kind of this weird two-pronged thing where, on the one hand, the different departments had trouble communicating with each other, but everybody's able to have really strong trust, and they're able to have coordinate stronger communication with each other. And Nate, I'm starting to stumble a little bit, so if you could help me out, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. So, the big thing that we get, that we took away from this is that the town is actually doing a good job moving forward with improving their communications. Equipment is very expensive. I believe the radio system upgrade is about, is around $30 million, and that's going to be fantastic as far as the different departments within the town being able to speak to each other on short notice or on the fly. Right now, they generally use cell phones or just regular interpersonal communications. Not a lot of town phones, which might be an issue, but everyone is at least talking to each other well and trusts each other when they're speaking to each other. Regarding those communications, so documenting them and being able to put on paper the decisions that were made over time is a concern because of potential, the need for potential reimbursement from the state or the federal government. Next slide, please. All right, so our second, and that's me in the middle with First Selectman Bowza and Chief Carl. Second aim was to assess preparedness and capability. The town is staffed with very competent individuals, from what we've been able to gather from our interviews. The responders, the firefighters, the police officers, people within the DPW EMS, they, they're well-trained and they trust each other to do a good job. Repeatedly, we were told that a lot of people have trust in Chief Carl in pushing forward the updates that the town is, has been implementing, particularly that, the new radio system. Again, as with any, any town or city government or organization or agency, you know, finances are always a problem, right? Everything is expensive, especially now. Equipment is not cheap, and then having extra equipment is also not cheap. And then, like all employers, staffing is always an issue. The radio system is, the current radio system is not great. You know, but at, at the moment, there are contingencies. Should there be an issue with the current radio system, that will be replaced within the next year or so.
Yeah, that was kind of the, the point that I was stumbling over was the fact that there is the dated radio communication, but there are steps in place to mitigate that, and everybody's already pretty aware and uses cell phones to help coordinate these efforts whenever an emergency does happen. So, there are steps in place to work with. And as Nate said, Chief Carl was mentioned more than once as a big driver for this trust and the ability for each department to be, to be able to communicate with each other.
All right, so we've come to the big conclusion. So, here are our recommendations for the Town of East Windsor, if you could click next. So, as everybody mentioned here, communication within departments is extremely important for the, the success of all processes. It's real in personal life, too. Communication is super important to make sure everybody's on the same page and knows what's going on. And along with this, the LEOP needs to be more openly accessible, like we saw in the survey. A lot of people knew that there was an LEOP, but they didn't know exactly where to find it. So, communication and an openly accessible LEOP are two recommendations for the town. And then, yeah. There's a picture of Peter and Nate and First Selectman Bowza. And then if you click to the next one, there's some pictures from the emergency preparedness event. I was not able to go, I was very upset, but it looks like a lot of fun, so, yes. Yep, and then, who is that gorgeous gal right there? So, yeah. So, thank you, guys, and I think we'll take questions now, if anyone has any questions. Those are our references that Victor beautifully did, if you can read them. Yes, so, yeah. Question time, who's got questions for us, yeah?
I would start, first of all, I want to figure out how to stop this.
Yeah.
So, my first question, the survey results certainly show that there's room to be, room for improvement there in communicating what the LEOP is and how it works and what people's roles are. I just want to clarify what I think you said, that the respondents for that were CERT team members only, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, our CERT team is one-year-old. They celebrated their first anniversary on, like, October 24th. And I think there, certainly that, that's a takeaway is to engage them a bit more in, especially now that we're updating the LEOP, making sure that they're aware of what their roles, responsibilities, limitations are with that. That, that's, that's good. Because we actually had one respondent say they had done with the CERT team for four to 10 years. Got him, that's kind of funny. That's, well, I mean, I guess time's relative. But it's one year. So, the other question pertaining to, it, it seems like a lot of the interview restrictions were limited to the hardware concerns that we have. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that was, that was one of the big issues was hardware. And the radio especially was brought up more than one time, and there was a lot of excitement about the impending upgrade to the radio. So, and there was some, if I remember correctly, you mentioned about the, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, there was mention about the, some, some, the DPW, like the equipment just sitting around and isn't necessarily getting used.
Yeah, so, yes, I can provide some background on that if that's helpful. When we went over to, we, we did a trial, was that a P-25 that they're on? No, that, that's just the 7-800, right? That Public Works is on? We're borrowing, we were borrowing equipment from a vendor to test it out as a possibility. And that vendor, we're not moving forward with that vendor because we got the $8 million from the state. So, that equipment that we have basically on a long-term loan was uninstalled from the vehicles, and the vendor hasn't picked it up yet. So, I appreciate the work that you guys did. I had a good time working with you. I'm glad you got to see some of the in-person stuff. That was, that was a unique.
Stand-up solo, yeah.
So, for those of you who are not aware, we did an, an all-disciplined emergency drill a couple of weekends ago, and they were live-action. Deputy Chief Murphy did a great job designing these, these three scenarios. And I'm standing over in like the observer section with, with a number of the, the students, and all of a sudden, four of them start running at the school bus going, "My kids, my kids!" And I was like, "What's happening?" Like, I didn't know they were part of it. But it was, I'm glad you guys got to be a part of that. From the board, any questions or comments? Let them off, please.
Thanks, Dave.
Next thing I'm going to do is I'm going to invite anybody from the audience, if they have any questions or comments for the, the students and their findings. Yes, sir, name and address, please. I'm just going to keep it.
Seven Henry Trail. In regards to CERT team, we are a new CERT team, and we do have a couple of people who have served on other CERT teams and are now members of our CERT team.
That makes sense.
But we are like babes in the wood. We're still trying to figure out what we're doing, how we do it, where we can do it. We're learning with every activation we have. Three of us just went down to Manchester CERT over the weekend and got a real education there. We're going to bring that back to the rest of our CERT members. So, we are learning. We hope to get better, and we hope to be used more with the Police Department and the Fire Department. We're ready, willing, and able to go.
Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, 89th May Street. So, now that you guys have had a chance to look around our wonderful town, I'm sure you're all planning, and when you get out of school, you're going to move here and fix everything.
Absolutely.
But then there'll be nothing for the rest of the students coming later.
We'll make new stuff. Other questions or comments for the students? Well, again, I appreciate the, the partnership with the university. It's good to, to maintain that from, from an alum's perspective, but also to bring some pretty smart people into an organization to look at things critically is, it's healthy and it's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have, may I ask the Board's indulgence for a five-minute break? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in recess at 7:30. All right, it is 7:35. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen back to order. We'll take up the, the regular call of the agenda. Under Communications, first off, I had asked for each of you to submit your requests for Board and Commission assignments. I tried to honor some of all of them. I also tried to balance that out with the days of the week that they meet and the workload associated with each. So, everybody got some that are a little bit heavier lift, some that are not much of a lift, but nobody's got meetings that are doubled up unless they're supposed to be doubled up, like Ag and Conservation as an example, they meet one after the other, so that they typically get paired together. If there's any changes that anybody would like to make to their own assignments, that, that we can certainly do, but this was the best I could balance that based on what everybody had asked for, considerations for time and scheduling. Looks fine, all right. Moving on to resignations, we have two. The first one is Randy Clifton's, Randy Clifton's resignation as a member of the Elderly Commission.
Make a motion that we accept Randy Clifton's resignation to the Elderly Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mark Simmons from the Housing Authority.
Make a motion to accept Mark Simmons' resignation to the Park Hill Housing Authority.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Made by Alan, second, I'm sorry, made by Heather, seconded by Alan. Any discussion?
Thank you for your service. It's been doing it for a while.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a new appointment. Michael Mack, Michael. Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Mike Mack, six-year Navy veteran, and I'm just looking forward to helping the town and utilizing our new community center to help our citizens.
Thank you for stepping forward. May I have a motion, please?
Will we appoint Michael Mack to a term to expire January 16th, 2027, to the Elderly Commission?
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you for stepping forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, I would invite Denise Menard. Oh, you know what? He said that. I'd invite Denise Menard to participate in this next conversation. This is a holdover from our last meeting. Mark asked us to, to postpone this. This is the contract agreement between the Electronic Systems and Software LLC and the town, I think it's through the state.
It is a state. It was a purchase for every town new tabulators for, for the voting machines, replacing the machines that were 19 years old that were beyond their life. People that's from eBay, these parts that they used, made three nights together. And the state felt that because we have, in their eyes, and it took a long time to understand why we got 13 machines. And we only have two districts and trust me, I tried to fight, I told them we would not take 13 machines. We won't take delivery of 13 machines. They said, we're taking your old machines and you're taking 13 machines. And there was no fighting with the Secretary of State. What it turns out is that they count our District One, District Two, which is Bradford, Warehouse Point, and then the Fire District. And then because we have a 57th District and a 59th District, all of those altogether meant that we needed 13 machines. It is definitely over what we need. Now we have to maintain 13 machines. And what this contract does is obligate us to have the maintenance done and billed for on 13 machines. So we're not happy about it. I wish there was a way that we could change that, but there's nothing we can do about it. It really is.
So we have more machines than we want. And the state turns around and makes us pay to maintain those machines that we don't want and need with a contract that we can't say no to.
Based on a flawed methodology.
I guess.
Sounds about right. No, that's on brand. That's all of that is on brand.
And when we asked originally, because we knew we were going to be getting 13 machines, how, what, what kinds of fees will come with having 13 machines? They didn't know.
Oh, that's actually a different answer than I expected. I thought they were going to tell you there was going to be none.
They didn't know, but trust us, you know, so.
And it's.
Sorry.
This is a thing. I don't, it just doesn't sit well with me. I understand that you're saying that you've gone to the Secretary of State and I know this isn't on you. But not only do we have to have early voting for things that, and we have to absorb the cost on all that. But now we have to absorb the cost on 13 of these and all that. It just does not seem appropriate for a town our size.
And mark this as well.
What happens if we don't do it?
I would think we are out of compliance with the law because we have to maintain voting machines. And we are now in possession of 13. So they're ours.
Right. How did they work?
You mean a description of physically how they work?
No, not how they work. Did they work well for the function intended?
Yes, they did work well. And we can do things with them that we couldn't do previously. They're much more easy to read. The old machines, because the technology was so out of date, I mean, we really had to kind of go there and turn on the machine and put the deals and turn around for times and say magic words. Hopefully, I mean, come on and do its thing. These are, you press a button that says open the polls. I mean, we have some, some other processes we have to put in place. Very secure. They're not tied in any way to the internet. The way we get the, the information that goes into the machine is on a secure line to the Secretary of State that downloads the information through the vendors that uses the machine, that sells us the machines. So it's a very secure process, a very up-to-date kind of process. And with, we're also going to be getting new software. I don't know if there's a cost on that. I don't know how that's going to work. Some of you may have heard of CBRS, which is our way of registering voters and maintaining our all of, all of the registration and voting information that is being rolled out for January. And that will mesh with the new machines so that we can do all kinds of statistics, statistical information if we want to. And I like that kind of stuff. So we'll probably be doing some of that. It, it, at the end of the day, this modernization is long overdue and will be well worth it right now for two fairly registered. So we're getting it done.
So you're not going to have cards or USB sticks basically to have reprogrammed for every?
Yeah, it is a USB.
Oh, it still is. So that software update is not, you know, like a network cable plugged in and?
No, no, because that would not be as secure as, as going to the secure site with USB that is specific for that purpose. It's a special kind of.
So we have to program 13 cards every single?
No, I think we used two last time here and two in Warehouse Point. We also.
So that's a bright spot. We don't have to actually just do them all anyway.
It was oversight on their part.
And they said, oh, no, we're coming and we'll fix, we'll, we'll clean all the machine. Well, of course they will. But we had to have a a recount because some of the elections were so close. Thank you, Bob Leach, for that. And in, in using, in, in the recount, anybody who was in Town Hall probably saw us was we had four machines all at once that we used and recalculated every single vote that was taken. It came out exactly, exactly the same. And at the end, if, if you have like a write-in person, now there are only certain write-ins that, that are actually official. They have to be registered write-ins. But you'll also standardly get the Mickey Mouse and the, you know, all of those. Those come in at the end of the tape. You can see the actual writing, the, the physical.
Oh, wow.
Written words on piece of paper. So it's, it's pretty cool, you know, to have. The new software that we're getting for registration and all of that is actually going to change the way the checkers books look. Everybody knows you go up to the checker and you give them your name, your address and your name, and you show them your license. And they look you up and book and cross you out going forward. And we just had some training out this week. Going forward, it's going to be by street still. I mean, you can sort of however you want, but we'll be doing it the same way we've done. There's going to be a little oval, like when you're voting, the same kind of oval. It's going to be a barcode and then the person's name and address. So after the election, what we have to do now, because of the old programs, is actually go through every page of the checkers book and take every one of those redlined out people and call out the name and we have to physically register it as having voted in another program. This will be able to use one of those guns that actually reads the label and the barcode and a lot automatically get done. So it's more changes to come. So you will see different things coming up for us. But again, I don't know what the costs are going to be associated with that.
In a presidential election, how many of the 13 machines will you use considering the split districts and the backups required?
So the presidential, we just had. And it was I think we used two machines on each side. And then we said, I said, I know here at this end, and I'm pretty sure Mark and I talked about doing the same exact thing on both sides. I took all the absentee ballots. We called it centralized absentee balloting so that all the absentee ballots could come here. And I had a separate machine in the corner that was just for counting those so that they didn't get on the same tape. It was much easier for us to read, not having used the machines before. I think the most difficult one is going to be coming up with the 57th, 59th and all of that. That's going to be a tricky one, a tricky one. I'm not exactly sure how we're doing that. Actually, one of the things that I'll be talking about during budget season is the possibility of I'm, I'm asking, I've asked the Secretary of State's office for how you go about combining districts so that you have some familiarity with the process if we should choose to choose. I mean, everybody would have to choose to do that. But it would then be one district, but then that's 57 and 59 and the fire district's still separate, but within one district, one polling place. Instead of having it, that you have two polling places, each was duplication of all of those things. So it might simplify things. It might also save a lot of money.
I think Ellington uses different polling places for different elections.
Yeah, that's also a possibility. I know we did a survey of a few towns. I know Southfield has less voters than us, more voters than us. We have 7,700. They have 10,000, about 10,000. And they only have one polling place. And she said, they never have a problem. So South Windsor, on the other hand, much bigger town, they have like five polling districts. So it's all over the place. We're just doing some research now to see if maybe that might be something to consider.
Is this the only, only company that will be able to service those?
Yes. Be sure that I write every page.
Oh, I know. I know you have. I know. I still don't. I have a hard time with this.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a motion?
Will we authorize for a selectman to execute contract between Election Systems Software LLC and the town of East Windsor?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. So next up, see if gentlemen is not for again. No Brandon again, huh? So the town has been involved with the Board of Education in a four-year energy procurement. Now, you can if you want to, but this is, this is really reporting. Had been involved in a four-year energy procurement agreement through Titan Energy that expired on December 1st. As you know, I spoke with each of you about the timing of the renewal of that and what the cost implications would be if we were to go outside of an agreement and effectively ride the market. The proposal that Titan presented to me, there were four options. There was a 12-month proposal, which would have put our per kilowatt rate at 11.17 kilo cents per kilowatt hour. There was a 24-month proposal that set it at about 10.9, a 36-month proposal that set it about 10.6, 10.7, and a 48-month proposal that set it at 10.44. So after discussions with board members, the decision was to go with the 10.44, the lowest rate that we could over a four-year duration. Again, the town and the, the Board of Education and the WPCA fall under that. So we locked in for a four-year rate at the lowest rate that we could get versus doing a shorter duration at a higher rate. There's no expectations that energy prices are coming down. So that was, that's the update on that. I had asked as recently as Tuesday for the gentleman from Titan Energy to be here. And you assured me that he would. And he's not. But I wanted to update you on that and ask for a motion to ratify my selection.
I'm moved.
Okay. Any discussion?
Jason, the Titan Energy, just for clarification, we may have touched base on that, but the reason we're going with them, they just have the better rates. You've looked at other.
They're, they're a preferred vendor that's accessible to us through CCM.
Okay.
And they are expert in procurement of energy in particular. So they, they service like many towns in Connecticut. I don't want to say a number because I don't know what the number is, but many towns in Connecticut is who they use. And we've had a longstanding relationship with them through CCM. They helped us secure our last solicitation, which was at 8.44 cents, which at the time seemed like a big number. And now it's one we would long for again. But that's the relationship with Titan.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that was Heather and Rick. That made the motion? Okay. Did this ambulance agree? So the draft agreement was included in your packet. I'm not sure if page three was included in that or not. That was a an error in the, the composition of the packet, but we have copies of that. I also have an updated draft that Chief Rude had made some comments on. So Chuck, I gave you a copy of this, right? You want to come on up? The first, first note is in the first recital. And that's just to note that the ambulance association is not a volunteer ambulance. It's a nonprofit. So we're just going to strike the word volunteer. And then you guys can take a chance to review page three if you want, where there were no changes between my version and Chuck's. Just give them a minute.
There's a grammar error.
On page three, first paragraph?
Yeah.
So. When you guys are ready, I'll have Chuck walk you through his highlights. Do other changes except for his highlights.
Correct.
All right, Chief. For yours.
So in the first page, section two, what I placed in there, this is, I added along with other operational needs in town and out of town. And that's, that's mainly for the purposes solely, it'd be used for events in town. But once in a while, on a rare occasion, it could actually do a football standby in Enfield. Or, you know, that isn't the purpose, but it, you know, I can't stand here and say 100% would never do that. That's why I added that because I want to be transparent.
Do a football standby? Are you getting paid for that?
Football standby is we do get paid for. Paid for. So I, it says, as to the ambulance being total insured loss from damage. So I agree that, you know, if the ambulance gets totaled due to whatever circumstances, the insurance company would pay you guys directly. You know, or if they, if they paid, it would, if they paid us, we would reimburse the town the money of the ambulance that you guys gave us for that ambulance. What I took out of there was repairs because if my ambulance gets hit or there's damage to the ambulance, we're going to get it repaired. Okay? But the way the wording was initially. But the way the wording was initially is it would have to go to the, go to the dealership or the body shop to get fixed. And then the insurance company would have to pay the town, the town would have to then in return pay. It, it's just, I took that step out, saying, I will report to the town any damage done to the vehicle, and also report that we're getting it fixed, and when it's fixed, I'll show you that it was fixed. So that's what I did on that, that, that part. And then I added on the, the, almost the last paragraph there, it says, and permitted purpose. That, that was used earlier. I think it should have happened there also. That's section twelve, number B.
Just like to go back to your way I read this, so the grantee shall, this is section A of, I mean, or A of section twelve that you wanted to remove repair, or says, the grantee shall also name the town as lender's last payee or last payee as applicable, as to the ambulance being a total loss from damage, and agree that insurance proceeds shall, at the town's option, be applied to repair or replacement of the ambulance, or to the obligation secured hereby. I don't have a problem with that. I don't understand. Like, so sometimes it's gonna be a replacement, sometimes it's gonna be a repair, but why would we take out repair and just, so then it would just read to, to be applied as replacement of the ambulance? Well, that's not always gonna be the case. I don't understand, we take that out?
The way I understood it, and maybe I misunderstood it. Repair, I understood as it was, it was hit by something, and it's gone to dealership to, or the body shop to be repaired. The, our, my insurance would take care of that, and it would just be, you know, done between my insurance company and the body shop, and I would notify the town of that. That's how I took repair. If I misread that or misinterpreted that, then that's my fault.
Yeah, I also don't think we want it to be at our option whether to repair it or to replace it.
Well, it's not our option.
But it is in the, and the language is drafted, and by taking it out, you, you, you get to the circumstance that Chuck was describing.
I think that it's in there because it could be a repair or a replacement, right? You don't know that until whatever happened, happened. So, so he's talking about, it gets in a crash and needs a new fender, well, that's a repair.
But as this, as this says, the insurance proceeds, proceeds at the town's option will decide whether or not to repair the, the fender or junk the ambulance. That's really an operational thing, I think, on this part.
Okay.
Okay, section C, the, with only the ambulance slash equipment that was purchased with the grant. So the way I was reading this is, you know, if for some reason that, you know, the ambulance gets completely totaled, that the money we received in from the, the grant would be reimbursed through our insurance company to the town. There's a lot of other equipment that's in that ambulance that we put in it, from cardiac monitors to Lucas to, and that's why I wind it very specific in there, that it was just the ambulance and, you know, the, the power load stretcher.
Yep.
And then the last one was including insurance-related and replacement of the ambulance. So that's just with total loss. And that's it.
Not that it's a big deal, but section five, letter C, reports, second line says call volume four, I should say, call volume four.
Did that twice?
Oh, you got it there?
Yes. Questions or comments on the grant agreement or Chuck's requested edits? I'd ask for a motion. Are you recusing on this?
I'm gonna have to, yeah.
Yeah, so for, for the record, Heather's gonna recuse on this.
Make a motion to accept the grant agreement between the Town of East Windsor and the East Windsor Ambulance Association Incorporated. I authorize first selectman to sign it.
As, as amended?
As amended.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Heather, you're in abstention, yes?
Abstained.
Thank you, and on behalf of East Windsor Ambulance Association, thank you to the Board of Selectmen and the town and the citizens of the town for supporting us, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for the good work you continue to do. Okay, also Heather, you're recusing from this one as well, yes?
Yes, I am. It's the last one.
Ms. Tots, good evening, how are you?
Just doing. So, here in West.
Good time.
Not sure of procedure, we had executive session.
Right.
And tonight we're here for a vote on a settlement with West River Farms LLC.
We did discuss this in executive session two weeks ago, this is a legal settlement. We have discussed it in executive session, it was not on the agenda, so we opted to postpone that until today. May I have a motion, please?
Just a clarification, the, the discussion was on the executive session agenda, but not a vote.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, the, it was properly noted on the agenda, but the, for the executive session, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the settlement between West River Farms and the Town of East Windsor.
Your second?
Second.
Any, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? This next piece is new. Or, oh, you're still up, Heather?
Which one here?
So there were changes in the state budget that provided for a couple of new property tax exemptions pertaining to people who have full and permanent service-related injuries. So Helen has gone through and identified a couple of those that we may be interested in, and they largely lead to the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, whether or not to enter into them. The first one would allow for an exemption of up to two acres of a dwelling unit for anybody with a, a permanent service-related disability.
Correct.
Anything else?
A little background, as of October first of twenty-four, new legislation was passed to enable veterans who were raided permanently and totally disabled to receive an increased exemption, which would be equal to the assessment on their house. No land, just the house. This bill was put together, I guess, pretty quickly. There were multiple issues with it, a lot of questions from assessors who were trying to enact it. In the spring of twenty-five, at the special session, the legislature tried to address some of the concerns that were brought forward. So as a result of the special session and trying to fix what they had already passed, what happened was assessors had allowed the exemption to every veteran who applied and had a permanent and total disability. Unfortunately, the new legislation took away from some people because even though they were raided permanently and totally disabled, the way the VA rates people, they weren't necessarily a hundred percent permanent and total. So we had to notify and take away the exemption we had given. Moving into the session and trying to fix that issue, several options became available, and the legislature, instead of enacting them as for everyone, they made them local options. So the first one, like Jay said, would include four people, veterans, who are permanently and totally disabled, rated at a hundred percent, a house lot along with the building. So it would not exceed two acres, but it would depend on the zoning, what a house lot is enough to through zone, exactly what the assessment that would be exempted is. So that was the first one. Do you want me to just run through all of them, or?
Sure, you remember the background on number two?
Yep, number two is the local option for surviving spouses. Now, the first time the legislation was passed, it was effective October first of twenty-four, which meant that any spouses whose husband or wife had passed away prior to enacting the legislation, October first of twenty-four, were not going to be eligible for the exemption. So again, as a fix, twelve eighty-one eighty-three F creates a local option that would allow the municipality to enact and make these spouses eligible for the exemption. As a side note, in this town, this would affect approximately four people.
One of whom reached out and said, you know, my husband died in, I think, nine months prior to the effective date of the October first date, and she said, I'm being denied this, this Gold Star Widows benefit. And that's when we looked into it and realized that this is now a local option instead of something that's compulsory under the law. So I asked Helen how far back we should set the, the look back, and, and she recommended October first of twenty-one. Can you explain why you picked twenty-one?
It gives us five years, just about five years, because we're going by grant this year. I don't believe we have anyone in town. Like I said, there's only four people, and all of them, the spouses had passed away within, like, a year or two of the enacting of the the legislation. Okay, so the next one creates a new local option for exempting the dwelling of Gold Star spouses. These are people whose spouses were killed in action. We do not have any in town, but you never know. It can be enacted to include the house, the building lot. It could be enacted to limit the exemption to the median assessed value. That's not necessary, I think it's just adding extra verbiage into the, into the legislation, or the ordinance should have been passed. Obviously, the writing of the ordinance hasn't taken place until we get approval to go ahead and, and do it. And then the last one creates a new local option that exempts the dwelling for those veterans that we had to take it away from them. They were graded at less than a hundred percent permanent and total. And again, it's a way the VA will rate someone if they consider a veteran to be seventy percent disabled, but they will pay them a benefit equal to a hundred because, excuse me, they're considered unemployable. Another loophole in the original one, this patches it up, it allows anyone with a service-connected total disability, even though it's less than a hundred percent, as long as it's permanent and total, they would be allowed to get it. And I think we have eight people in town that would qualify for that. So we're not talking about a really huge base that would be eligible, but having to give people the good news that they were going to be exempt for the building value, and then having to say, oops, sorry, the state just told us you're not, it wasn't pleasant. It really wasn't. I'm a big fan of veterans, I do a lot of work with veterans, and it killed me to have to do that. So when these new local options became available in the spring, they all seemed to make sense. And I have figures dollar-wise, if there's any concern about it, but I, I think they're, yeah, I, I think they're all all very good, I think, since the original legislation was so full of problems that this would help equalize it.
So two of these can be done with just a vote of the Board of Selectmen, two of them require drafting an ordinance and approval at town meeting. So just kind of testing the board, I would like to move forward with all four. Anybody have any objections to doing that?
Nope.
Okay, then can I have, I'm, I'm gonna word this out specifically here. Public Act fifteen one sixty-eight, twenty-five one sixty.
Twenty-five one sixty.
So.
Is there a timing issue?
It can be made effective as of the October first twenty-five grant list.
That's the timing issue, is tax bills going out, that's for July, though.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean.
Well, if it's effective for, for October first twenty-five grant list and forward, specifically in the ordinance.
I mean, is there a difference between acting on all four of them at the same time? Or acting on two tonight and two at?
No, I mean, you know, to that point, I have to bring an ordinance back here for options three and four anyway, so I can bring the motion for options one and two back at the same time, if you want to do that. Okay.
But we do have a January thirty-first deadline for the grant.
So on that point, my timing would be to bring both the motion and the draft ordinance back up on the eighteenth, and probably add that to the annual town meeting on the twenty-ninth of December.
That would be fair.
Okay. Then I would ask for a motion to postpone.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I said eight-thirty, I'm gonna make it. So we need to appoint a Board of Selectmen, an additional Board of Selectmen member to two more pension, pension negotiation teams. One is the WPCA, and the other one is to the school nurses' negotiations. You have been involved with the WPCA issue? you have been involved with the WPCA issue?
Yeah, I'd like to take that one. I thought we, I thought you guys railroaded me into nurses last time. So if you wanna unrailroad me, put that on Rich or something, that'd be great.
Nurses got one.
Okay, so that's Alan, and that's Alan.
You did pick some.
It's the the employees. Right, it's it's the union governing WPCA employees. Okay. Then we're on the tax refunds.
Motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $2,663.20.
Second.
A motion made by Alan and seconded by Heather. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. The gun's got real little. Oh, so do the words. I don't need glasses.
All of you?
Uh, forty-three.
If you don't need them yet, you will.
I totally do. I just don't want to do it. Uh, first, I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. Um, as we enter the busy holiday season, um, I do want to share a couple of updates of things that have happened in the last couple of weeks and that are coming up. First, on the 21st, uh, the town held its annual staff retreat at Community Center, which is an event that brings employees together in ways that we hope uh, breaks down silos, um, allows people to get to know each other a little bit better, um, and foster more of a sense of collabor collaboration. Um, it's also an opportunity for us to honor those employees for years of service, and this year we recognized employees celebrating their first anniversary, all the way up to and including their 35th anniversary working for the town. Uh, we do truly have a committed and talented workforce serving community, and so this is a small way that we can recognize and thank them for that. Um, the Charter Revision Commission began its work on uh, Monday, the Monday, the 24th, um, and they started off by electing Sarah Muska to chair that commission and Don Platt to serve as vice chair. Um, they reviewed the charge that was put forward by the previous Board of Selectmen. Um, they asked some good questions about the resources that they'd have as that process went forward, and they set their um, first public hearing dates for Monday, the 8th, at seven o'clock right here. So that's the first in a a long process that they need to go through, uh, in terms of engaging the public on changes to the potential changes to the charter. And all they're gonna be doing at that point in time is asking for people's ideas. They don't have any of their own to put forward at this point, so they're just soliciting feedback. Um, on the 25th, the town and the police union concluded their final negotiation session regarding their collective bargaining agreement. Um, pleased to report that a tentative agreement was reached, and it'll now go to the police union for their consideration and ratification, and then it'll come to the Board of Selectmen for us to to put the final approval on that. Um, I do want to thank the union leadership for their good faith engagement, for working towards an agreement that I think everybody walked away thinking was in the best interest of the employees and of the taxpayers. Um, so that's appreciated. On the 29th, Department of Community Services and the East Windsor Police Union partnered again on the Stuff a Cruiser event at Walmart. Um, despite cold and windy weather, our police officers, our town staff, and our very generous community collected a near-record number of toys for families in need this holiday season. Um, thank you to everyone who contributed and for continuing to show kindness and community spirit towards our friends and neighbors. Um, I attended, along with a number of staff, um, the CCM Annual Conference this week, um, which was an opportunity for municipal officials and town staff to um, engage in valuable continuing education, a chance to reconnect with colleagues from other communities, um, and an opportunity to share ideas and strengthen approaches to local governance. Um, today, uh, I participated in a meeting convened by Representative Foster with state officials, including representatives from the governor's office, the Office of Policy Management, the Siting Council, DEEP, uh, the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, and others, um, to discuss three issues pertaining to uh, grid-scale solar projects. First is safety associated with them and the reporting that goes with that. Um, second is the uh, concerns that we share amongst uh, about the siting of those projects, and the third issue was the taxation of those projects, all of which, um, the state government continues to be at odds with what the um, the interests here in East Windsor are, but we continue to push back against them. Um, and I want to recognize Representative Foster for the exceptional job she does for advocacy on this issue. Um, and her leadership is being recognized by other communities beyond those that that she serves as empowering their own interests as this becomes more pervasive in communities other than here. So um, I just want to recognize and thank her for those efforts. Coming up on December 13th, uh, at noon, the town will celebrate um, our version of Reefs Across America. Um, we'll be joining communities nationwide and honoring veterans who've served our country. Uh, our local ceremony will be held at the Windsorville Cemetery um, at at noontime, and all are welcome to attend. Rick?
Uh, nothing to report. Uh, my liaison assignments have just come through.
Catch you next time.
Catch me next time.
Alan, um, you covered the police union contract, so I'll just uh, report on Wetlands. Uh, Wetlands had a uh, public meeting last night on a project that is going to be at uh, 173 North Road, which is the really the corner of 140 and Mullen Road. It consists of a hundred and fifty-two apartments and about thirty townhouses. Um, that passed through Wetlands last night and will, uh, I would assume, show up on a planning and zoning agenda pretty soon. That's it. Thanks.
Heather?
I don't have anything yet. Um, the liaison, um, my liaison report next time, Bob.
Bob?
Got a couple.
Same here. I'm looking forward to my liaison assignments.
Enjoy. I really did the best I could to balance those out with what everybody asked for with the scheduling and the workload. Um, that's like it. Uh, okay, uh, second public participation, second opportunity for members of the public to um, address the Board of Selectmen. Same rules as before. I'll of course ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to address the board. Uh, if you do, please state your name and your address and then state your business, and that'll give anybody online the same opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
Can you spread them? Question is. Who is? Starting with that, if you're talking situation, is that gonna be a response to the widows of veterans who are 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 due to pass? Will the tax exemption still go for the widows of a hundred percent disabled?
So.
It's kind of unclear in here. I read it several times, and it's a little confusing.
So I will, uh, I'll answer for myself and say that the the assessor is uh, certainly able to work with you on getting clear answers to that, but I think that the intention of the law um, is to provide the benefits that we are able to, um, or the intentions of the board is to um, provide the benefits that we are able to under the law. Um, so Helen can best answer your question.
So you don't have to be a yes or a no.
Well, so it depends on the exemption that you're talking about, and that's why I don't wanna, we can talk offline too.
I'm gonna be losing my husband, and I need to be prepared to to know what's coming, considering that where he's now gonna become eligible for this, we own the home jointly. How does that affect me afterwards? Will I go back to paying full taxes? These are things that.
So, um, if if you can hang around for a couple of minutes after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk about your specific circumstance. I am sorry for what you're going through.
No, you know.
But uh, I think I can, I think I can answer that, but I I shouldn't be, I I shouldn't be doing it at this point in time. Just give me a couple of minutes.
Yep. I have a second question. It is happening on the corner of Windsorville Road and Chamber Road, where all of that has been cleared right to build all property.
So the gentleman who owns that property, his name Cliff Chapman, and I've met with him directly, and he said that his intention with that property is to farm it. Um, and when I asked farm it for what, he said he didn't really care. It was gonna be leased out for whatever um, whatever people who are involved in production agriculture we're looking to do, whether that's hay, tobacco, corn. Uh, he was basically just putting farmland back into production. Um, and that's evidenced by the fact I think he's already put it in 490.
And then in response to Mr. Baker, what it, how is the plan gonna be if they're building all these apartments and condos for the school system to be able to accommodate these children?
I think the best thing to do would be to go to the planning and zoning meeting and hear the, hear their presentation. The presentation that we received at the Wetlands meeting was specific to Wetlands issues and and planning and zoning issues like that are not covered in that. So the the detail of, you know, what type of apartment, you know, where you might be able to, or or townhouse, where you might be able to glean from that, if it's a family or not, you know, would would give you that, the answer to that impact. But I I can't tell you that at this stage, and it's best to get it right from the horse's mouth. Keep an eye out, it'll be a public hearing. And I would think fairly soon.
Thank you.
Is there other public comment? Name and address, please, sir.
Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street. I have a concern on our community center. There is no public available calendar for what's going on there. I called Planning and Zoning, and it was told, no, we don't have a calendar for that.
Planning and zoning or parks and rec?
I'm sorry, parks and rec. I follow these. Yeah, fair enough. Uh, but we'll get back to you, but nobody ever got back to me. I have a concern because I was told, T, if you want to apply to use the facility, just put in an application and we'll decide whether you can or you can't. Well, it's ridiculous, because if you want a plan to put it in an application to use the facility, you'd like to know what's going on there, the dates you may want to choose, not put it in and get the number because it's busy. So I just wanted to bring that out. I have major concern over that.
Good, no, thank you.
Having been in charge of Scout Off Building Committee, always had a publicly available calendar, and we still do. It's not that hard, so it should be done that way, so people know what's going on. It's also a good way for people to find out events they may have missed and not realize were taking place. So, there you go, and since you own the place.
Good, no, thank you, sir. Okay, is there other public comments? Hearing, uh, anybody online who would like to address the board? Before we adjourn, there's two comments, I just want to make sure they're not all of it. Uh, with no further business to come before the Board of Selectmen, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Double.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
And you know what?
We're adjourned at 8:32.
Yes.
Say.